Derby's rich history preludes its city status. A destination with a reputation for producing top rated. A city of heritage, communities with Herculean hearts, down to earth not shy of work sold with the earth types. Our folks gab in a dialect that's an art form of its own, a vernacular blessed with swanky slang to Google on your phone. I once witnessed a lad claim our accent awful. Our misguided was it. When the former capital once named Mercia speaks the closest to our people, I'd argue that we even speak it better than Her Majesty. It's not bath, class, class. It's bath, class, class. Many statements taken in jest. It's in our nature to have a laugh, take the rip, know how to enjoy life and make the best of it. Fun seekers but not slackers. Our people are born with a taste for success, breaking through our comfort zones, putting ourselves to the test. Our communities are diverse, with over 71 different languages, providing music to our ears, soundtracks to our city streets. We understand that hard work fuels aspiration. Our ancestors are role models of grit and dedication. That's why our city's businesses are second to none, because our businesses are as top notch as the people working for them. Those proud to graft all week, take the train, drive or bus ride, waiting for the weekend to watch the Rams play at the Pride. Our football team is famous and our industry is too. From aeronautics to computer tech, our enterprise is matched by few. Our location is envied nationwide, banging the middle, the Midlands pride. In the past, we've been too humble about our history, but now is the time to sing aloud about our underdog victories, because we're on the rise. The city of innovation, forward-thinking insights that draw instant admiration. It's obvious that our people don't have time to live in the past, because we're too busy creating the future.
Throughout the pandemic, us frontline staff have had to future-proof our services.
We all live in Derby, proud to be here. It means the world to us to serve our city.
We're passionate about this place, just like you. We face the same strife and hardships too. Many of us have worked right through, giving it our best shot to pull the city through.
We're all here for Derby, working hard, serving our communities, serving you.
We're as passionate about Derby as you are. We want the best for the city and the community.
We're proud of this place, proud to call it home. We're passionate about our people and our future. What's important to you matters to us. We strive for a relationship built on trust. We're all a part of this city, working with Derby, for Derby.
Parson, glass and so on, because I'm a descendant of an immigrant. My great-grandparents crossed the English Channel in a little homemade vessel with a sail, actually. And it's, you know, we're all visitors to this country, it's just a question of when. People are looking puzzled, but that's true. Welcome back, everybody. Both of you, both those of you who are here in the council chamber and members of the public watching online, we will now conduct the second part of our annual general meeting. I would again take apologies, do we have any, please?
Yes, apologies from councillor Lonsdale.
Councillor Lonsdale, any others? Thank you. Any declarations of interest, please? Take that as a no. Now approve the minutes of the previous meeting of the council held in February. Will somebody move, please? Councillor Barker and a secondaire councillor, smale. Anybody wish to speak on them? Thank you. Those in favour, please show. Anybody against? That's carried. Our announcements from the mayor, have several announcements to make before we proceed with the meeting. Firstly, I would like to thank the councillors for my re-election earlier today. I'm deeply honoured to have been elected mayor of the city for a third term. I very much look forward to working with you all over the next 12 months and I will continue to uphold the values and traditions associated with this historic office to the very best of my ability. I fully expect that over the course of the next year, we will enjoy more lively and robust debate in this chamber, not least owing to the prospect of the whole council elections due to be held in May 2023. I very much hope that we can continue to be respectful of one another despite our political differences. As I did this morning, I would also like to congratulate the newly-elected and returning councillors. I hope you have a successful year ahead of the 2023 elections. Finally, I'd like to thank the returning officer and her team for organising this council's final elections by thirds and for facilitating our annual meeting today. Next, to address some housekeeping matters, the councillors will note that updated versions of items 15, 16 and 17 were circulated after the publication of the agenda. These are the appointments to constitutional committees, outside bodies and neighbourhood boards. I expect that several votes are likely to be required on appointments. Please be patient as we go through the process and be sure that you indicate your preference clearly. Secondly, I'm pleased to welcome the youth mayor and deputy youth mayor-elect to the meeting this evening and to make their declarations of acceptance of office. We'd ordinarily celebrate this occasion further up the agenda, however, we've scheduled it a little later to allow for the young people to come to join us after they've finished school for the afternoon. Several pieces of good news to share with you this afternoon. As I'm sure you're all aware, I was delighted to learn that Derby has recently become one of the only three cities in the country to be rated as outstanding by Ofsted for its services to children and young people. The first time in Derby's history that we've reached such a rating. It's difficult to overstate the significance of this achievement. That is a testament to the hard work of hundreds of employees across the organisation, as well as those councillors involved with the strategic delivery and scrutiny of children's services. Ofsted's report highlighted the council as being outstanding in its overall effectiveness, the impact of leaders' work on social work practice with children and families and the experience and progress of children who need help and protection. I know that we'll never stop striving to improve the services we deliver for young people in Derby, but let's take a moment to reflect and congratulate everyone involved in this really significant achievement. Well done, and I think we can applaud them, don't you? Last Saturday, I was invited to open the new Morways Sports Village, together with several sporting celebrities. The planning, design and construction of a new swimming pool at Morways has spanned successive administrations, and I know that many of you will have shared some involvement in the project. A world-class facility incorporates a 50-metre swimming pool, water park and learners' pool, as well as the neighbouring athletics track. What is more, I'm pleased to report that project was delivered on time and on budget. And I particularly enjoyed councillor Pete Field's letter to today's Telegraph. Anybody still reads the printed version? It's the principal letter there, and it's good to see.
Just to interject, Mr Mayor, it was councillor West's letter.
Beg your pardon, beg your pardon. Oh dear, my first error of the day. Whoops.
Now we have a fifth group. There ought to be positions for the standards committee, and there isn't one for the independent group.
Can I ask for guidance on that? Presumably it's Whittaker, is it?
No, there is normally an independent seat reserved for an independent candidate on the standards committee, because councillors previously resolved to remove the political balance requirement from the standards committee. So if there is an independent council that wishes to sit on the standards committee, there is a place available for them.
Does the independent group wish to nominate somebody at this point? Okay, we'll leave that, leave that in abeyance then. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, also, the same goes for the climate change group.
Yes, councillors previously resolved that each group will be entitled to appoint a climate champion, so again, if the independent group wishes to appoint a climate champion, they can do.
Can you put your microphone on councillor Engel, because...
Sorry, Mr Mayor, and I'll stand when I address you as well. We'll decide later date what we're going to do about that. Thank you.
Thank you, so that one again is left in abeyance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The remaining contested positions are the children's and young people's champion. The two nominations that have been received are for councillor Whitby and councillor Lind.
Does the independent group wish to nominate somebody at this point? Okay, we'll leave that, leave that in abeyance then. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, also, the same goes for the climate change group.
Yes, councillors previously resolved that each group will be entitled to appoint a climate champion, so again, if the independent group wishes to appoint a climate champion, they can do.
Can you put your microphone on councillor Engel, because...
Sorry, Mr Mayor, and I'll stand when I address you as well. We'll decide later date what we're going to do about that. Thank you.
Thank you, so that one again is left in abeyance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The remaining contested positions are the children's and young people's champion. The two nominations that have been received are for councillor Whitby and councillor Lind.
Declare councillor Whitby elected.
The second champion's position to be contested is for the mental health champion. There have been nominations received for councillor Lonsdale and councillor Lindsay.
Councillor Lonsdale and councillor Lindsay. Right. Beg your pardon, yeah. We've got a Lind and a Lindsay now, that's going to cause fun. We've got a Carr and a Care. Right. Those in favour of councillor Lonsdale? Those in favour of councillor Lindsay? I declare that councillor Lonsdale is elected.
And then the final contested position on this document is for the armed forces champion. There have been nominations received for councillor Cooper and councillor Lindsay.
Those in favour of councillor Cooper? And those in favour of councillor Lindsay? Councillor Cooper, you are elected. Thank you. Right. I now move the constitutional appointments and may vote on the document as a whole, is that where we are? Yeah. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Pearce. Those in favour, please show. Anybody against? That is carried. Now move to the constitutional appointments as amended for approval. Do I have a second, please? I've done that bit, have I? Right. Neighbourhood boards, okay. Item 17. Now consider the appointments to neighbourhood boards. Are there any nominations? Do we have already?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, we've received nominations for all appointments to neighbourhood board chair positions. There is one contested vote to be determined for Derwent Ward. We've received three nominations for councillor Tracy Pearce, councillor Martin Rawson and councillor James Testro. So in these circumstances, we would need to do two rounds of voting to determine the appointee.
In which case, I'm going to hand over to you, Alex, to get your head around transferable vote votes or whatever. Please conduct the election.
Could councillors indicate if they are in favour of councillor Tracy Pearce being appointed? Could councillors please indicate if they are in favour of councillor Martin Rawson being appointed? And could councillors please indicate if they are in favour of councillor James Testro being appointed?
What do we do now?
So that is 18 votes in favour of councillor Pearce, 16 votes in favour of councillor Rawson and 10 votes in favour of councillor James Testro. In these circumstances, councillor Testro is eliminated from the voting and there is a second round of voting conducted between councillor Pearce and councillor Rawson. So could councillors please indicate if they are in favour of councillor Pearce, please? And could councillors please indicate if they are in favour of councillor Martin Rawson? Councillor Pearce is elected.
I declare that councillor Tracy Pearce is elected as neighbourhood board chairman for Derwent. Okay, I move the substantive document. Have a second, please? Thank you councillor Ayer. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Anybody against? That's carried. We're now on to outside bodies and charities, which has been circulated in advance of the meeting. For the final time, we'll conduct any votes for contested positions that may be required, as well as seeking to fill any remaining vacancies. So Alex, tell us the news.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't believe there are any contested positions on this document. There are a small number of vacancies, however. We require an appointment, well, the university hospitals of Derby and Burton NHS Foundation Trust have requested a nomination from us. It is to a three-year appointment. Would anyone like to make a nomination to that position, please?
Well, yes, or can we delegate it to the leader of the council to agree that, rather than wait until whenever?
To the chief executive.
To the chief executive, then, right. Some people say yes, some people say no, but councillor Care will never do either of those two things, but there we are. Are there any other nominations? In which case, we'll delegate it to the chief executive in consultation with councillor Care or bring it back as a vacancy to a future meeting. Thank you. Is that it on?
No, there are a couple more, Mr Mayor. There is a vacancy of one of the two appointments requested from the Derby and Sandeaker Canal Trust.
Any volunteers for Derby and Sandeaker Canal Company? Councillor Engel, well volunteered, great. Time you did something. Is that seconded? Councillor Sealy Engel is seconded. Are there any other nominations? In which case, I declare you councillor Phil Engel elected to... Well, we'll end up in Shelton Lock one day.
Mr Mayor, the final vacancy of this document is for the English Churches Housing Group, Midlands Customer Focus Group. One appointment is required, it need not be an elected member.
And have we any nominations? It doesn't have to be an elected... It doesn't have to be an elected member, so perhaps people can do some soundings of candidates that want to get involved in these things. The millennials I talked about this morning. It's a good start. Anybody want to go for it? No? No takers at this point, so we'll leave that as a vacancy for now. That concludes this item, is it? Item eighteen?
That concludes all of the vacancies. Again, if you'd like to move the substantive document for debate.
Okay, I move the substantive document. Have a second to please. Thank you councillor Jennings. Thank you. All those in favour, please show. Anybody against? That is carried. Now we'll move to the appointments of outside bodies and charities as amended for approval. Can I take a second? Is there any?
You've just done that.
Oh, you've just done that? Yes. I told you I was getting old. Item nineteen then is the, you've got before you, the attendances at annual conferences, which I will move. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Smale. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Anybody against? Oh, that's got through that bit. Good. It's now my pleasure to introduce an item endorsing the election of the youth mayor and deputy youth mayor for the forthcoming municipal year. Almost eleven thousand ballots were cast at nineteen secondary schools across Derby at elections held earlier this year. Together with councillor Williams, I was able to attend the Voices in Action Youth Council meeting where the results were announced whilst the deputy mayor attended the hustings event before Christmas. We were all so impressed by the passion and determination shown by the young people who put themselves forward. At every councillor, as every councillor in this room knows, standing for election is not an easy thing to do. I will move the recommendations as printed and, subject to their approval, we will invite the outgoing youth mayor and deputy youth mayor to address the meeting before Omar and Gloria make their declarations of acceptance of office. So... The outgoing youth mayor, are you here? You're there. Hello, Priya. Okay. Can I take the recommendations as printed? Everybody in favour? Anybody against? In which case, congratulations to those people concerned. And I invite Priya to address the meeting. Connie and Connie. Connie and Priya down there.
I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on my time as youth mayor. I've been in the VIA Youth Council now for seven years, so giving young people a voice has always been at the forefront of what I do. When the opportunity arrived to become youth mayor, I knew I had to take it. And after running twice, I got it on my third time. So I knew it was my chance to make a change. The past two years have been the hardest point in my life, but this position has really given me a drive and a passion, something to focus on and something to energise me and keep me sane. And I want to thank you everyone that's worked with me for being so patient, working with me and being so understanding. It's also been a particularly hard time in the world with no, everyone working from home, no meetings being allowed and not being able to attend any events. But I'm happy to say myself and Priya still managed to put our motions into play, hopefully hold all your councillors accountable and ask lots of questions and give lots of ideas. But thank you to everyone that's worked with me, to everyone who's invited my views and really listened and answered all my questions. I still have a drive to make change, so this won't be the end. I'll be continuing my commitments I have made during my time in office and will continue to follow the projects that I've worked on. And I'm really happy to hand over to Omar and Gloria, who I'm sure will do an amazing job.
It's funny because me and Connie are the same age and we literally started Voices in Action within like a week of each other, I think. Like in this very room. And it's been a long journey, but it's been empowering in a lot of ways. And I as well, I want to thank everyone. I want to thank everyone in cabinet who's listened to our questions and taken on board what we've been saying. And I also, I'll be carrying on with the projects that we started to do with the city centre redevelopment and stuff like that. And I can't wait to see what Omar and Gloria do because this year's going to be special, I think. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Connie and Priya, and I've enjoyed working with you on a number of occasions during the last year. I now invite the youth mayor and deputy youth mayor elect to make their declarations of acceptance of office with Emily at the front here, if you'd like to come forward.
So first have a pleasure presenting with your chain.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr Youth Mayor, I will now ask you to take the formal declaration of acceptance of office. If you can repeat after me. I, Omar Aslam, having been elected...
I, Omar Aslam, having been elected...
...to the office of youth mayor of the city of Derby.
To the office of youth mayor of the city of Derby.
Declare that I...
Declare that I...
...take that office upon myself...
Take that office upon myself.
...and will duly and faithfully...
And will duly and faithfully...
...fulfil the duties of it...
Fulfil the duties of it.
...according to the best of my judgment and ability...
According to the best judgement and my ability.
I affirm my commitment...
I affirm my commitment...
...to represent the voices of young people in Derby...
To represent the voices of young people in Derby.
...and to corporate parenting...
And to corporate parenting.
...in respect of the city councils' looked-after children...
In respect of the city councils' children...
Looked-after children.
Or looked-after children.
I pledge to take every opportunity...
I pledge to take every opportunity...
...presented to me...
Presented to me.
...by virtue of my role...
By virtue of my role.
...to promote the wellbeing of children...
To promote the wellbeing of children.
...and young people.
And young people.
...and particularly those in the care of the city council.
And particularly those in care of the city council.
I undertake to observe...
I undertake to observe...
...the codes to the conduct...
Codes to the conduct.
...which are expected of...
Which are expected of...
...representatives of Derby City Council.
Representatives of Derby City Council.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Madam Deputy Youth Mayor, I will now ask you to take the formal declaration of acceptance of office. If you can repeat after me. I, Gloria Osay Bonsu, have been elected...
I, Gloria Osay Bonsu, have been elected...
...to the office of deputy youth mayor of the city of Derby.
To the office of deputy youth mayor in the city of Derby.
Declare that I...
I declare that I...
...take that office upon myself...
Take that office upon myself.
...and will duly and faithfully...
And will duly and faithfully...
...fulfil the duties of it...
Fulfil the duties of it.
...according to the best...
According to the best.
...of my judgement and ability.
Of my judgement and abilities.
I affirm my commitment...
I affirm my commitment.
...to represent the voices of...
To represent the voices of...
...young people in Derby.
Young people in Derby.
...and to corporate parenting...
And to corporate parenting.
...in respect of the city councils' looked-after children...
In respect of the city councils' looked-after children.
I pledge to take every opportunity...
I pledge to take every opportunity.
...presented to me...
Presented to me.
...by virtue of my role...
By virtue of my role.
...to promote the wellbeing...
To promote the wellbeing.
...of children and young people.
Of children and young people.
...particularly those in the care of the city council.
Particularly those in the care of the city council.
I undertake to observe...
I undertake to observe...
...the codes to the conduct...
The codes to the conduct.
...which are expected of...
Which are expected of...
...representatives of Derby City Council.
Representatives of Derby City Council.
Congratulations, Gloria.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am humbled and extremely honoured to take up this role. I assure that on behalf of the deputy Gloria and oneself, we will focus on the pledges that I promised to the youth of Derby City. I will endeavour to highlight all the good work and positive contributions young people make to our city and ensure the voices are heard. Our three aims for the next year will be on mental health, knife crime and job opportunity for the youth. The best from Derby's youth mayor is yet to come, so I say watch this space and let the roadshow begin. Thank you.
Watch for your seats, councillors. They're coming. And they're younger than millennials. Good. We now get to the notices of motion. Item twenty-one is on honorary freedom of the city of Derby. Someone to move? Councillor Hassel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we get on to the motion today, I was hoping to have a minute of the chamber's time. Yesterday, I received the tragic news that my sister passed away after several days in the exceptional care of the staff at the Derby Royal Intensive Care Unit. She was just fifty-five. I'd like to take this opportunity to give my heartfelt thanks to all staff at the ICU for their faultless efforts and pay tribute to the extraordinary work they do day in and day out in such trying circumstances. I would like you all to join with me in putting your hands together for a round of applause as a mark of appreciation for these fantastic individuals. Thank you, everyone. Mr Mayor, I am probably not best placed to do this motion justice today. As such, I would like to move the motion as printed and give way for others to give their comments. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I think we all understand that. Thank you, Councillor Hassel. Councillor Smale, do you wish to?
I will reserve my right to speak, if that's all right, Mr Mayor. Allow other people first and I'll finish.
Right. Any other speakers on this motion? Councillor Nater?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, councillor Hassel, Liberal Democrat group will support this motion. Although we did not manage to stay in the championship, I would like to say thank you to Wayne Rooney for all its efforts of the players and Derby County staff. He has shown great commitment to the club and city at his personal expense, even to endow the job at Everton. Let's wish Wayne Rooney and Derby County Football Club the best for the future. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any other speakers? In which case, councillor Smale, your go.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Obviously, this is an unconventional thing to do. Me and Steve have been obviously discussing this with media outlets in the last week or so, and there's always been a focus on success. And sometimes, we always drive outcomes by success. But there's one thing in this last year that, you know, during the torrid time of what's been happening at Derby County Football Club, there has been one constant, and that is Wayne Rooney. And short period of time he's been at this football club, he's galvanised, revolutionised a fanbase to come out to its heart. It was all here, or most of us, on the day when we did the march towards Prior Park, fighting for the future of the club. It was great because of cross-party support. I think almost literally every councillor, I know councillor Repton being a die-hard Derby fan, you know, was celebrated. And what Mr Rooney has done in this last year has been phenomenal. It's loyalty. Loyalty in football is hard to come by now, these days. We tend to focus on the normal traditions of hiring and firing managers, and we all know football is a cutthroat business. And I think that Mr Rooney has done an exceptional job at Derby County Football Club by lifting the minds and hearts of football fans, who, there's been a lot of us as football fans worried about the future of our football club. And it looks like that we're coming towards the end of that chapter, where we're starting to start fresh with a new era under Mr Kirchner. So Mr Rooney has been a breath of fresh air to our communities. And there was one key moment for me, which has been highly documented, where I've been speaking about the passions for why this should be coming forward. And that was the day we got relegated against QPR. And Mr Rooney brought his team all the way up to the gates at Moor Farm. Now, when was the last time we had a football manager do that? Come up to greet the public? Councillor Pearce, I think you was one of the first ones right at the front of the gates, you know, recording. But the language and the overtones that came from Mr Rooney was so refreshing. You know, he's not been afraid to call out EFL, the situation that we've been in, the previous ownership. And it's just been such a breath of fresh air for the whole community to listen to what Mr Rooney has brought to the community. As I said, it is an unconventional thing that what we are doing. However, I'd like to think that Mr Rooney will be here for many years to come, but we don't know. It's football. But we must base this on what has been achieved in the last year. And Mr Rooney has really brought loyalty, stability and passion towards our fanbase in the city and for everyone inside the city of Derby with its residents. You might not have to like football to appreciate what football clubs do to our city, but they bring a massive impact into our local communities and especially with our mental health. I think quite a few councillors have had concerns about football fans' mental health in relation to where their football club's going. But Mr Rooney has always been a constant. He's been there from day one and has always been out to the forefront, speaking to the media, speaking to the public. And I think that deserves major credit. It's loyalty you can't buy in football these days. So thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Smale. Councillor Hassel, you have the right to sum up if you wish to. Thank you. All those in favour, please show. Anybody against? I think that was unanimous, which doesn't happen too often in this chamber, but it's good to see it. Thank you very much indeed. And you'll get to hear when there's a special council meeting arranged to do that. And that will involve a two-thirds vote for freedom of the city, but not this one, as we've already done it. The next one is on socio-economic duty to be moved by councillor Peakfield. Councillor Peakfield.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just offer councillor Hassel our heartfelt condolences to you and your family at this time from the Labour Group? Mr Mayor, now that the populist motion is dealt with, could we please get to the deeply important, gravely concerning matter of our social responsibility to protect the many financially vulnerable people of Derby? Mr Mayor, this is not my motion. I'm a conduit today serving to bring this motion to full counsel. It's a product of activists of Derby collectively campaigning for social justice, of which we are a champion. Those people are Derby People's Assembly and Derby United Against Poverty. Derby Labour Group thank them for their passion, their hard work and their commitment to social justice. Derby Labour Group thank them for their passion, their hard work and their commitment to social justice. A petition has now been signed by over five hundred and seventy-five people supporting this motion and that's more than many of the consultations that we launch. Mr Mayor, this speech has been quite simple to compose. It's far more important that members today hear the voice of the people. So the remainder of my speech is therefore the words written by Derby People's Assembly and Derby United Against Poverty. Rent, food prices and energy bills are all going up. About a third of the city's population, that's over thirty thousand households in Derby, could suffer fuel stress with a further twenty-three per cent having to make difficult decisions such as eating or heating to get by due to the cost of living crisis. Though prices are rising, many people are facing financial impacts of the pandemic. Low wages, reduced benefits, risk of job losses, zero-hour contracts and the impact of over ten years of cutbacks to public services. This is causing more people to suffer with debt, needing food banks, fuel poverty, evictions, stress and poorer mental health, homelessness and more people and children in poverty. Derby has suffered budget cuts to local services such as public health and social care, children's centres, youth services, libraries, arts and leisure facilities, schools and support for children requiring send. These cuts affect life chances. Derby is listed in the worst ten local authorities in England for the lifetime gap between wealthy and deprived areas. And this means people in poorer areas live shorter lives and spend more of their shorter lives in poor health. Derby also has a shortage of affordable housing with thousands of people on the social housing list waiting for more than eighteen months. The rise in food banks is a response to this humanitarian crisis, but it is not a solution and must not become the new normal. There is another way Mr Mayor. Derby City Council has the power to make decisions that help people rather than cause more hardship. No council should make decisions that cause or worsen poverty and financial struggle, nor make life harder for those with the least. The socio-economic duty requires public bodies to adopt transparent and effective measures to address the inequalities that result from differences in occupation, education, place of residence or social class. While the duty has been acted in Scotland and Wales, the United Nations has criticised the UK government for failing to activate this duty since 2010. So today, the people of Derby are asking their fifty-one representatives here in the chamber to voluntarily sign up to this duty to ease suffering and give the people of Derby a fair chance. It's happening in other cities. Councils in other areas such as Newcastle, Southwark, Stroud, north of Tyne, they've already signed up and councils including Sheffield, Preston, Glasgow, Wigan, York, Bristol and Manchester, they're all taking action because of the way that cutbacks and financial struggles have affected their residents. Derby City Council is called upon today to step up too. So let's pledge to consider the impact of every big decision upon people's financial security and take steps to reduce poverty and the disadvantages that come with it. If the council fails to act on this campaign, more people's lives will be at risk. This motion calls on Derby City Council, one, to formally, voluntarily adopt the socio-economic duty. Two, to poverty-check decisions and policies for socio-economic impact and how this interacts with other types of inequalities, protected characteristics included within the Equality Impact Assessments. And three, to urgently develop a proactive strategy, taking meaningful action to alleviate effects of the cost of living crisis and reduce socio-economic disadvantage. This must draw upon good practice examples from other cities and consultation with diverse local community groups, unions, activists, Derby People's Assembly, Derby United Against Poverty, Derby Poverty Commission and the voices of those who are living the struggles in Derby. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Peakfield. councillor Rawson, you want to second or reserve your right to speak later?
Yes, I'd like to second and speak Mr Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
First of all condolences to councillor Hassel. It must have been very difficult to come in, speak here today. So just to say that to start with. It's sad but also of vital importance that this motion has to come to council today. Having spent a lot of time on the doorstep recently talking to residents during the election campaign, I don't think anybody can deny the enormous difficulties which residents are dealing with at the moment in terms of huge increases in the cost of living. The costs of basics of life, food, light and warmth are increasing at an unprecedented rate and for some have already become unaffordable. In the twenty-first century in one of the wealthiest countries in the world, millions of our fellow citizens cannot afford to keep warm or buy food. That is an absolute disgrace and damning indictment of the Conservative government and indeed the Conservative-led council here in Derby. The response I'm afraid has been pitiful. A small rebate on council tax, which most people who don't have direct debit still haven't received. And a loan towards gas and electricity bills which people will have to pay back. So it's absolutely clear, we can't rely on the government or this council administration to act to help our constituents at the time they need it the most. There are a lot of things that they could have done to help. Could have minimised the council tax rise. Tories didn't do that. It took a Labour amendment at the budget-setting meeting to halt another council tax hike. Could have cancelled the increase in national insurance contributions. Tories didn't do that. It came into effect in April. Could have cut VAT on energy bills. Despite saying this would be a benefit of Brexit, the Tories didn't do it. They could have turned the two-hundred-pound loan for gas and electricity bills into a grant. Tories didn't do that. People are going to have to pay it back even if energy prices remain sky-high. They could have uprated benefits, at least by inflation, to help the poorest in society. But of course the Tories didn't do that. They could have changed the tariffs so that gas and electric top-up meters used by the poorest people are no longer the most expensive way to pay for energy. Didn't do it. And they could have introduced a windfall tax on the unexpected massive profits for the big oil and gas companies to fund all of these measures. They didn't do that because after all, that would have hit the party donors in the pocket. It may be Mr Mayor that over the coming days and weeks under the pressure of campaigns like this one, the government performs an almighty U-turn. I hope they do because help is desperately needed. But what can we do here in Derby? Well, we can at least make sure that Derby City Council thinks about the impact of every decision it makes and how that affects people living in poverty. We know our esteemed Prime Minister Boris Johnson doesn't take much notice of rules and here's another example of the government failing to comply with the law of the land. Despite the Equality Act being passed by Parliament in 2010, successive Tory governments have failed to implement section one in England. This requires public bodies to consider in their strategic decision-making ways to reduce the inequalities of outcome which result from socio-economic disadvantage. Scotland and Wales have implemented the law there. In England, that hasn't happened. So at this very difficult time, now is exactly the right time for Derby City Council to take on this responsibility, to review policies, to make sure the council is actually contributing towards reducing poverty and not making it worse. All this in order to help ease the cost of living emergency for people in Derby, the people we represent. Let's just look at some of the evidence why it's needed. Derby Homes tells us that thirty per cent of tenants are in arrears in Derwent Ward and it's similar across the city. Martin Lewis, the money-saving expert says, "I'm virtually out of tools to help people now. It's not something money management can fix. We need political intervention." As a trustee of Revive, a charity helping residents of Derwent Ward, I know firsthand how people are struggling. People are not able to use food banks because they can't afford the energy to cook the food that they receive. Children eating the free toothpaste they've been given at the dentist because they're hungry. Parents sending their children out to shoplift for food. Elderly people surviving on sandwiches and three hot meals per week.
Thank you councillor Rawson, your time is up.
That's the situation today and that's why we need this motion.
Thank you. councillor Care.
Thank you Mr Mayor. This motion brings together two things which are at the heart of liberal democracy. Equality and looking to the future. And you can't separate them. If, three years ago, when we passed the emergency motion about the climate emergency, we had actually started taking action, some of the issues we have here in the city now would be a little bit smaller because we would have started investing in insulating our buildings, in putting more PVs on roofs, in maybe putting another turbine in the river. And it would have made us as a city slightly less dependent on the big global corporations who suck the money out of our economy because we are buying our gas, our electricity, our fuel from them. If we were able to be gathering our own energy here, it would be keeping that money within our Derby economy. And we could have been starting that much more energetically, much sooner. This is the direction that we need to go. We need to look to the future and we need to look to what we can do here in Derby. We know that we can't have that much effect on what happens nationally. We only have three MPs. But here, we can be more in control and this is pushing the direction in which we need to go. So I welcome this. It's not being phrased in quite the way I would have phrased it. And I'm sad that we haven't got a deadline for when we're going to have a strategy written. Mind you, we had a deadline for a climate strategy and that hasn't happened. So maybe that's not worth the paper it's printed on or the screen it's shown up on. But no, I welcome this and we need to take it forward. We need to make it work for the people, all the people of Derby.
councillor Skelton.
Thank you Mr Mayor. It is very important that we actually, in all our decision-making, do take account of the socio-economic duty and actually do that thoroughly and properly. I'm sorry to say that I have certainly seen equality impact assessments that I've done in this council, which have not been thorough. And although they've found issues that they should address, they just carry on with the policy regardless. And that's not in the spirit of how you should be doing things. If you find something that is an issue, you should deal with the issue and to mitigate that issue. And so I do hope that when we hopefully pass this, when we actually do go through checking out all our new policies and other initiatives for whether they impact on poverty or et cetera, et cetera, that we will do that properly. The other thing I think probably could do with some emphasising is the Derby Poverty Commission. They are, as we speak at the moment, setting up a Poverty Truth Commission with commissioners as drawn from people who themselves are or have been experiencing poverty. So it's the people who are affected, whose voices are actually there at the decision-making table to actually say what the actual nature of the various forms of poverty are and devising solutions and bringing in those people who have the power in the outside world, whether it be in the public sector or the private sector, to actually challenge them on what they are doing. So I think that aspect of this whole work needs to be emphasised a lot more because it's all right, people who aren't or haven't indeed experienced poverty talking on about how terrible it is, and indeed it is terrible, having experienced it myself. But there's nothing like the actual people who themselves have experienced it being the ones that are actually making those decisions and setting the course for the future. So I hope that will be taken very much to heart by those people within this council, cabinet members who are going to be pushing this forward. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Skelton. Any other speakers? councillor Williams.
Thank you very much Mr Mayor. I would like to thank Nadine for bringing this amendment. And I do have, sorry, the motion, and I do have an amendment that I would like to present to council. So hopefully as you go around, we'll do this. Is it all right if I continue speaking Mr Mayor? Thank you. Sadly, councillor Rawson had to go ahead and start picking political bumfights here because that really does make me sad. He hasn't been around for a while, so maybe he doesn't know what we have been doing as a council. So I want to give a little bit of an example of what we've been doing locally to try and address some of the issues. In your absence councillor Rawson, as you just heard, the Poverty Commission was set up. It's non-political and it's designed to be that way because this is an issue that isn't about politics. This is an issue about helping those that we can help, that need that help desperately. What the Poverty Commission has done since it has existed in the last year is it has set up some subgroups who have been working on issues such as person, home, digital and post-pandemic recovery. We've had some quick achievements and some successes in that. But one of the big things that moving forward they have done is to create the Poverty Truth Commission model. And what the Poverty Truth Commission model is going to do is to facilitate a citywide strategic action group for the cost of living crisis. Again, a citywide strategic action group that involves all of our partners, including those of us in the room today. As a council, we've also looked at the Housing Support Grant, which has offered thousands of pounds in support to our residents. And we've also continued with the Holidays Activity and Food Programme, which has been really good programme that enables young children to attend activities during school holidays whilst doing things, having a hot meal or food and activities that either increase their educational outcomes or indeed their leisure and culture outcomes. What the motion in front of you, or the amendment sorry, in front of you does is it talks about, well, I'd like to talk about what we did in the outbreak of the pandemic. We got together, we formed the hubs. We worked together across the city with all our partners to make sure that the support was given to those that needed it. It's a really good model that we've done there. We realise that not everything could or should have been done. We also know that not everything has to be done by the council and that some of our partners are better and more qualified to deliver some of our services. The model that we've used is one of support. It's one that is based on an asset-based, strength-based approach, not negativity. I hope that you'll see the motion in front of you, the amendment sorry, that I've done, is actually helping with this. It doesn't take away anything that the motion, the original motion puts up. What it says is it resolves to bring to cabinet a report that presents the steps that can be taken to assess the impact of the community response so that we've just been through in terms of the pandemic. And to have a look on what the impact to the community has been, to learn from those lessons and to formulate a council and partnership strategy that takes due consideration of the socio-economic status when making strategic and political decisions. And it seeks to incorporate socio-economic status in equality impact assessments. The formulation of the strategy should be widely consulted on, as Nadine said, including groups, partner organisations, agencies and especially those with lived experience of being socially, economically disadvantaged. And the reason why I bring this to you today is because the steps involved in the original motion could have been sidestepped by cabinet. But I'm not going to sidestep them. I want to address them. And we know that these things have to come to cabinet in a report. The decisions have to be made. And I hope that you will... report, the decisions have to be made, and I hope that you'll agree that this amendment to the motion will seek to do that.
Is the amendment seconded? Councillor Webb, do you wish to speak on it now, or reserve your right to speak later?
I'll reserve my right to speak, Mr Mayor.
Any other speakers on the amendment? Councillor Fried Hussein, and then councillor Petefield.
Mr Mayor, the amendment actually does suggest various small steps that might help people who are experiencing extreme disadvantage and poverty. But in all honesty, I think what we need is a drastic change in the economic policy which has been pursued in this country for quite some time. This is not a temporary phenomenon that has come to surface as a result of rising fuel prices and that kind of thing. If you look at the economic setup, inexorably, resources have been going to people at the top who've already got plenty at the expense of people who've got very little. And although as councillors, we need to be doing whatever we can to alleviate difficulties wherever possible, and there are some good suggestions contained within that, and I'm sure they're going to help, but what we need to be arguing is make a case everywhere we can that the national cake needs to be cut and distributed differently, because otherwise more and more people are getting trapped in the rental sector. If I could just give you an example, if somebody is earning, say, around £27,000 a year, that's the average wage nationally. The average rent in the city is now touching round about £800 a month. So that is more or less one-third of your income gone towards paying your rent. And then you will never, ever save enough money to put together a deposit to be able to buy your own house. So you get trapped and trapped. And part of the problem is with the current setup, because in the old days, the rents were subsidised, everybody had the opportunity to accumulate a better deposit, and they were able to get on the housing ladder within the long run, because if you look at the two 10 years, the difference between renting and ownership is if you had enough money to buy your own house, overall during the life, you will probably live for nothing, rent-free, because whatever you paid in the interest, you'll be compensated, more than compensated, by the house values going up, the capital gains. So at the end of a, after a 40-year period, homeowners who've owned their property lived absolutely for nothing, nothing to pay for it, whereas the people who are renting, they each year have to pay more rent, and even very recently, in the Derby average, the average rents in Derby have gone up by 12%. Most, I mean, we are, you know, we are focusing on fuel prices and inflation rising generally, but the rental market is going bonkers. Rents have gone up, as I say, but, and then the problem now is there is not enough rental property, and there's competition, and people are actually desperate for shelter. And whether they have to borrow money, whether they have to take out loans, they are actually renting. So there's a variety of problems that need to be tackled in order for us to alleviate this problem, otherwise tinkering at the edges about doing this little bit and that little bit is not actually going to address the fundamental. And I think we need to also write to the government on this and say, something needs to be done, and something drastic needs to be done very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hussein. Councillor Petefield.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, surprise, surprise. The Conservatives' amendment waters down the motion until it's no longer about us actually taking action, but actually just turning everything into a talking shop. You said that your amendment doesn't take anything away from the actual motion, oh, just accept points one, two, and three of the motion. This amendment to the motion to formally adopt the socio-economic duty removes the adoption of the socio-economic duty. So we all know that Conservatives are extremely good at kicking things into the long grass, but this motion comes from the people of Derby, and that means that the people of Derby are watching you, and they're going to hold you to account, to take action. You and your ABCD, goodness knows what leader, you've got to act now and accept your duty of care. It is literally a human right. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Dinsler, and then councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I really have to totally support councillor Nadine Petefield's response to councillor Williams' amendment. Councillor Williams' amendment totally removes the heart of the original proposal and resolution, which has been supported by Derby United Against Poverty, the Derby Poverty Commission, and many other people who have been campaigning for many, many years, as councillor Frieder Sain has mentioned, to tackle the inequality that exists in our society. And we all know, a lot of it cannot be influenced by us as a council, and we need to do more action at a national level, and that's another story and another action for another time, but there are things we can do here. And councillor Williams' amendment destroys the intent and the need for action, action which is focusing the minds of our officers and we as elected councillors who may be making decisions, so that those decisions take due regard in the ways me and I highlighted originally in this resolution. The three actions are not-
Mr Mayor, under CP65, I'd like to make a personal point of explanation.
Councillor Dinsler, please take your seat. Please do so, councillor Williams.
Councillor Dinsler mentioned there that this was supported by the Poverty Commission. That is not accurate, whilst Poverty Commission, I am sure, will support some of the things in there. This has not been in front of the Poverty Commission, and this is not supported in total like that by the Poverty Commission. Therefore, that can, that statement be removed, please, because that has not been formally supported by the commission.
Councillor Dinsler, can I invite you to withdraw that particular comment?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I'm sure the Poverty Commission, when they do, will consider this, and I'm sure they are looking at these sort of things, because they are. I'm happy to remove that bit, I'm happy, I'm happy to remove that bit, but there are many organisations and many groups and many individuals, and today, at the door, at the steps of the council house, we heard the testimony and the anger, the vulnerability, and the anguish of individuals who either know or they've experienced inequality, socio-economic inequality and injustice through no fault of their own. And I think we, as a council, have a duty, a moral duty, to consider what we can do within our own limitations, and the three actions which were in the original motion do give us some more progress in what we can do within our own control. We can do more in terms of campaigning on a national level, we will do, we will continue to do that, but we have less influence over that. Here are three tangible actions which have been presented, I think, very eloquently by councillor Petefield and councillor Rawson, and I think amending them or removing them as actions is inappropriate, not required, and will be unjust. So I urge this council, chamber, and members to reject the amendment and support the original resolution proposed by councillor Petefield. Thank you.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. William Blake, over 200 years ago, said, poverty would be, oh, pity would be no more if we didn't make somebody poor. And I think that's the problem. We do live in a society, as councillor Hussein has said, which is profoundly unequal, and we have huge levels of inequality in Derby, as has already been stated. I would also support not watering down the original motion, so I would urge rejecting the amendment, because I think the original motion speaks to what this council can do, the best it can do for the people of Derby. But I would like to also take this point, along with councillor Hussein, to say that in the last 12 years of a Tory government, we've had benefit cuts, freeze, pay freezes, precarious unemployment, we've had inadequate rent controls, we've had no increase in social housing, we've had disinvestment in public services, we've had underfunded health services, we've had inadequate spending on education, and that all comes before the recent increases in national insurance and the inflation fuelled by fuel prices. So what I say is that, yes, I agree with councillor Hussein, that actually, the real depth problem here is in our national politics. Many people in this chamber do genuinely want to help those people who are suffering in our city. So we can do, we can only do what we can do, and the original motion is much stronger than the amendment, though I would very much urge rejecting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Atwill.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We as a group welcome this amendment, and I'm a bit disappointed, sorry, not that, we don't accept the amendment. Apologies, Mr Mayor.
Your turn.
I'm a, no, I have to follow you, I'm a bit concerned that councillor Williams hasn't had the audacity to put this amendment in, because there's people struggling for their next meal. This amendment, to me, and I'm sure the rest of the chamber, is kicking the can down the street, so therefore we will reject this amendment. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any more speakers on the amendment, before I ask councillor Webb to speak? Councillor Webb.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very interesting, some of the comments that have been made, particularly about Derby Homes. Derby Homes have an energy efficiency programme that's been going on for years. We have seen air-source heat pumps, ground-source heat pumps, photovoltaic cells on roofs, all to keep energy consumption down within social housing. Not all of them have got it, but that is a 30-year programme on the housing revenue account that is being constantly worked on. And I really do object to comments like councillor Kerr has made about Derby Homes when she is a board member of Derby Homes and knows exactly the work that is being carried out. So over 20 years ago, since Derby Homes-
One moment, councillor Kerr.
May I have a point of personal explanation here? I do not believe I mentioned Derby Homes. If I did, it was not with a capital H for homes. It would have been Homes in Derby. I am also a member of Derby Homes Board. I have strongly advocated for work on the energy efficiency of the Derby Homes council-owned properties. If I'm referring to Derby Homes, it is with a small h, meaning the properties that people live in, in this city.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, thank you, Lucy, because it came over to me quite clearly that it was Derby Homes you were referring to, and that's why I've put that information before you. We've worked at the decent home standard for over 20 years, and we're actually coming round to that refurbishment work now as part of a 30-year HRA plan. What we haven't been able to do is to get private sector landlords up to the same decent home standards. We've got some very good landlords in the city, but we've got some that are not as good, and we have got tenants who are afraid to complain about private landlords for fear of eviction under a Section 21 notice, which is a no-fault eviction that the government is looking to remove. So our environmental health team are working very closely to improve the standards of the private rented sector, bearing in mind that their rents are 53% on average above the rents for Derby Homes. We've also attracted, as I was talking about councillor Polter, funding for insulation to those homes in particular areas of the city, and members in Osmiston and Symphim will know about the metal-clad homes that we are now working to insulate through a government grant and bring up the energy efficiency. And the policy of Derby Homes is to have at least an EPC rating of C, which is above the majority of the housing in Derby, either in the private or the rented sector. We are working on doing all we can. We've not only attracted grants for social housing, but we have attracted grants for private sector housing. We have joined together organisations over the Covid pandemic to actually give us Food for Thought, the Poverty Commission, we've worked with Community Action Derby, we've brought all our food banks together wherever possible, and we have reduced homelessness in the city. It was over 30 when I took over this portfolio. We're down to single figures at the moment, and there is not a person sleeping on the street that has not been offered accommodation. When it comes to working with poverty and health inequalities, the Health and Wellbeing Board are doing that effectively, and there is more to do. We know that, but this is not the way of doing it. Working together, being proactive, because as the motion says in one, two, and three, we do it voluntarily. What the amendment is asking for is a formal process to bring that work to council so that we can guarantee the forward-thinking and work to be continued. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Webb. Can I take the vote on the amendment? Those in favour of the amendment, please show. Those against the amendment, please show. The amendment falls, which returns us to the substantive motion. Are there any further speakers on that, before I ask councillor Petefield to sum up? In which case councillor Petefield, the floor is yours.
Thank you, councillors, for seeing sense, but my God, is this a sign of the year to come? Please tell me we have not made a mistake by granting you the grace of another year in charge, because the second thing that you do is to refuse to take responsibility to protect people from worsening poverty in Derby. This issue is affecting everybody, but here in Derby, it is adversely affecting thousands of our residents who are worse off. So please, I implore you, vote to take the socio-economic duty voluntarily, and let's do the right thing for Derby. Thank you, Mr Mayor, I move.
Those in favour of the substantive, unamended motion, please show. Any against? The motion is carried. And that brings the business of today's annual general meeting to a close. Thank you for your patience as we've negotiated the various constitutional appointments. Thank you for your patience as we've negotiated the various constitutional appointments. I very much look forward to seeing you all at the next meeting in July. Thank you very much.